First point is our working agreements. That we embrace conflict and seek to resolve positively and respectfully. That we address one topic at a time, especially so we can stay focused. And bring topics to resolution. We value diversity and invite multiple points of view in order to maximize the mission. And we respect others' views and thoughts through active communication and participation. It very good practice that recently. Make sure that we look for positive presuppositions. And look to be problem solving focus. The thought on working agreements from the board? You pass the BOSI's update, please?
Sure, just during the last time we met, we talked about the possibility of considering reorganization with the BOSI's. And some opportunities there, just through looking at the structures, looking at what's working. So, we had the new BOSI's meeting two weeks ago, and during that meeting. And I had talked with Gary and Tina before, since they serve all new BOSI's. That just with lots of things going on in our school districts, and also in other places. That just a pause on any of that type of real big action work around the BOSI's. Prior to that, Marcy Palmer and I had a good conversation with several of our school district employees. Who his work is impacted by the work of the BOSI's. And so appreciated that dialogue, but really, just as agreed, decided it's not the best time to take on that type of work that could be really impactful. And we clearly stated that the BOSI's is not a broken system, it's not a broken structure. There's opportunities for growth and development, but not in the sense that we want to bring that work to the forefront right now. So, it was consensus from the other school districts, Wytham Park and also Purple Creek. We do have a board meeting. That will happen on the 28th around that timeframe. In the meantime, superintendents are going to meet together with Marcy, who's executive director for the BOSI's. And we are going to just work through some ways that we want to gather information about what's working in the BOSI's. And some opportunities. So I just wanted to give you all that update, no action needed. We're just going to continue to support our staff and make sure that we don't move anything forward that could have a negative impact on teachers, students, parents. So, any questions about that at all?
I'm going to explain a little bit about because it's a collaborative, it's not like we can just say we're out or we're in. That it really has to be because of the administrative unit status that of a collaborative has to be everybody in partnership making agreements about and have consensus about what moving away would look like or even staying together.
Yeah, I mean, all of our services are connected in some one way or another. So we think about, we only have a few FTE that are connected with the new BOSI's in terms of employment and service divided. But any, any kind of change would have a ripple effect in the BOSI's. So if we as a school district were to put in an application to be our own administrative unit or become part of the BOSI's, it would have a ripple effect on the other member districts. And so CDE would put that, take that into consideration with our application. So, we're all interconnected and we just want to make sure that we are aware about that. And at this point, none of the other districts were ready to take stance on what direction they would want to go either. I need to just pause for a second. How long do we think before this conversation? Next year?
There's a particular timeline for when we can apply, but the work needs to start even before then, so.
We have to submit by September, but we went through this sort of time of looking at what's working with areas of growth. Maybe we say it's just small tweaks here, and so we want to maintain everything that is, except for make these adjustments. Or we do want to move forward. So I think through this, this summer and through August, September, while we're really talking with staff. That's not just talking to BOSI's employees, it's also talking, I'm looking at Jody's special education teacher at the middle school. It's talking to staff, it's talking to schools, and also talking to parents about what's working. They do a great job, they're just doing great work. Keep on getting better.
A core of test procedures, but a board members' emails are involved in discussions?
Just put that on the agenda for this meeting, since it's the first time this board has had any core requests that require us to go through or to submit some board members. So just wanted to open it up and if you all have some questions first and or know more about the procedures that we go through. And Suzie's here, she can also speak to that process. Just thought that would be helpful for dialogue and see if there's any questions, is that work?
Yeah, that'd be great. I mean, it's a new process for me, and it's a new process for all of us. Just thinking about legalities about it, that again, all emails communications are for all as public officials.
Yeah, fortunately, we just updated our policy August 16th, 2021, so we were ahead of the game.
Yeah, so when we receive a core request, and just tell me if there's anything you have questions about. When we receive a core request, those, sometimes we get an informal email that might say, hey, I need this. And they always direct back to saying, you need to fill out this form. That couple of years ago was not a form, it was, so it's now created, so now you can get there easily. So that goes into Suzie's email address. And then she really assess, we assess who handles this. So for example, if it were student records, a parent wanted a student records request, we would call that and maybe contact anyone who had access to those types of emails with those records. And then we sort through that and redact certain information, especially when student records involved. And then, in this particular case, in this particular situation, we receive those requests. In this case, reach out to Kat, our technology director, and kind of go through a process to damage this. And then, at that point, attorney is brought in, just to make sure we're talking through and doing through the process. As opposed to what we want to be able to do, and honoring the process and also honoring the request. So anything that was communicated via email from board members was included. Any attorney client, student information, so those need to be included. And then from there, the question to the board is oftentimes when school district board members' emails are released, that they go somewhere in the office where any board member could come to see them. And that's something that we haven't worked through, so I want us to get some feedback on how you all would like to see that move forward. And probably need to take action in the regular meeting on this matter. On a board development, if it should go there. Because there's a lot of different ways you can do that. If it's hard copy, then you can't see it. So I just wanted to show that's our process for now.
Yeah, because that was my, my question is how do we all get to see what's out there? And I'm assuming the person who originally requested it has that in their position right now. And we have not heard anything from that person. No, okay, so I went ahead and filled out a core request myself, just to cover bases for that same information.
It's great, Suzie's got it on a flash drive.
And now we can get them flash drive at the same time.
You need $5, I can get it.
Yeah, so much just for the cost of the flash drive.
Five bucks is a bargain.
It's way between killing three trees.
Yeah, yeah. We do have the, we do have a copy of it, anybody, emails that anybody can come in and read if they would like. I'd rather not just keep those in my office forever. So I don't know if there's a timeline that we would have that I can do something, shred those or do whatever, so that's not.
In a flash drive, are you just giving them to people?
Whoever submits a core for that, okay, yeah.
So, size the subject of the core request for 1,800 pages of emails, which I'm sure tech, you know, Kat's very, very efficient. I took her a little bit of time to get that together in the midst of a busy schedule. So the timing of the core request for my emails was somewhat interesting, and I thought the topics were also interesting. So I've got several questions. One, so that information is now public, so it's out there in the public, it can go to the Pike Street Bulletin, it can go anywhere, is that correct? So if I want to send five flash drives, Pike Street Bulletin, with all these emails on it, I could do that?
I'm, I think we should.
Discuss the appropriateness of the board.
Because the policy doesn't cover that.
Well, I mean, there's, what's legal and what's the correct thing to do, right? I mean, there's probably all kinds of things that I could do that are legal and policy would say, sure, you get to do that, but it's probably not my, not the most appropriate. So I think a discussion with the board to say, how do we handle these things, what should that look like?
Is there a limit on the person, so is the person's name public, is that also public information that did the request? Because I have a question about that also, and how the request was made and the contents of the request and how that actually may have violated some HR confidentiality issues that I think is a question that needs to be raised, that's probably at least as important as anything in those emails. So we need to figure out a venue to ask that question, so a specific teacher whose name has not been out of the public. Who had emails that there was a request, because they sent emails, that person sent emails to the entire board. There was a request for those emails. So how did that teacher's name get out? That's a significant ethical and potentially legal concern for me in and amongst the district.
And I don't really think that we can speak about this at this point. This is something that you have to have an attorney present for.
Yeah, I don't feel comfortable talking about any employee within the district. I guess I, I don't have a problem with any of my email correspondence that I have. I don't either. Because number one, I don't, I'm probably the, people can say I'm the worst person to respond to emails, but it's been, I've learned this practice years ago, that you may get emails in from the public or whatever, and I don't respond to them. If they come back, they respond. We, as a board, look at them and maybe make one response from our president, not me making a response. So, all day long, you can look at all this on me, I don't care. But I think the problem we've got here is that I might ask for a core request, because if anything in an email was related to me or to, as the board would do something, then I have a problem with that. And I think that us individually, we need to back up and look at ourselves and say, we don't do this. We come back as a board, we're not individual, there is not an I and team. We are a team, and that's the way we should be. And I don't see this happening. This is really disturbing to me, it really is. This whole thing's disturbing to me. And nobody, and I don't think that we should go, hey, let's go put this out to the journal or whatever, Jack. I don't think that's the right way to do it.
Is there any, is there any limit on what the requestor can do with the information? Since that requestor's not a current board member?
Once the person has a request, that means they have the content. And I would honestly recommend that our attorney present for any advisement here. So this is important content, and I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, and I don't want to speak on behalf of our legal decisions here.
So I had this question to you and Tina on Tuesday, all these core questions after I found out that I was the subject of the core request by the citizen of the city. And so we maybe should have planned to have a lawyer here, that if we were actually going to have a robust discussion that was meaningful as opposed to a superficial discussion where we get no answers. That's how I would recommend we do meetings, to Gary's point, and how we better work together by getting information sooner rather than waiting until the next meeting, which is sometime in June.
Yes, this is important, that's why it has to be happening in public meetings for this purpose.
And then we agree that it needs to continue with a discussion that we would have an executive session to discuss.
For in public meetings.
Well, since it concerns the board, and technically, we shouldn't be going into an executive session when it's concerned the board. Because we need to be transparent to the community. We need to be sitting here, whether it's me or whomever, that maybe, you know, is the person that's wrongdoing here or has done something wrong. I'm not saying anybody has, but I think it was the attorney here present. You know, we need to ask that question. But I don't think that as a board, that we should go into an executive session when there's an issue that I feel is an issue. And, you know, number one, I'm just not comfortable with the way this board has been reacting to the community. I think that this board has, and I'll put it as this board, has stirred up a lot of things that should have been gone, settled months ago, hasn't. And we keep re-stirring this pot. And honestly, I, I don't like to be a part of this, and I won't be a part of it.
Part of the discussion or part of, I mean?
Part of the board, if this is the way the board wants to continue on doing things. Because all we're doing, we're here to set policy, we're here for the kids. And right now, we are so far out of this. We've gotten into the weeds over personnel, we've gotten into the weeds over a whole bunch of other things. We shouldn't even be there, and we are. And we just keep inviting this to come back, and it needs to stop.
So, I was going to ask other parameters on what's, I don't know if this is a word, so forgive me if it isn't redactable.
Redactable, yeah. And Suzie and I know.
Redactable?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we've made corable the words. Yeah, so, so anything related to student records, the legislative, Colorado provides a statute on what's, what needs to be redacted. It's pretty expensive, but any student records is, can be redacted. Any of our, our attorney client privileged information does not have to be released.
If it's personnel, it would be if it was somebody's evaluation. But, yeah, we met with, met to get advisement on this really to make sure that we weren't releasing anything that we shouldn't be. And in this instance, it was really students.
And personnel?
Evaluation.
Evaluation from their file, so from their employment file, we couldn't release that.
And the last question I had on, on this for now was, you mentioned in the notes for tonight's meeting, a potential online housing essentially of these documents rather than keeping them in the file. Is that something we are entertaining so we could access them electronically? So if any of the board members wanted to look at what was core, they can do it in an efficient manner that way?
Something that's encrypted.
Yeah, so then.
Right, it would be a login that we would have to log into it, as you're suggesting.
It's possible, I think that's where we want to, it's kind of.
That is part of the discussion, is how we want to proceed with that. And Jack, I am hearing that you have questions for counsel, and some of those may be, but those would be things that we would agree upon, discuss as much as we can here and then follow up with counsel.
So it'd be a policy change or revision of the policy that we just revised last August. So it'll be a several month process.
No, it wouldn't be a policy revision, this is just procedural.
Opening stuff in a bucket, I mean, that's, that's fine, although again, this, this one person in the community that made the request has all these documents. And my understanding is that nothing was redacted without, which is great, because that means there was nothing on emails that was inappropriate. So I appreciate that, Gary explained the wrong ceiling. Now, one thing I'll agree to carry on.
It wasn't, I guess the defining wasn't appropriate, this subject to the person.
Right, because redacted is because it's identifiable, personal information has nothing to do with, it's a content otherwise.
Or without.
We did redact individual students' names.
Right, but no documents were withheld. And to Gary's point, I totally agree with the fact that we should go into executive session only for the reasons that are based on Colorado statute that even allow us to go into executive session. And just having an attorney present, that in and of itself is not enough to go into executive session. Getting directed advice from that attorney is a reason, but an attorney present is not enough to trigger the threshold of the executive session. So I agree, we should do as much in public with this board as we possibly can going forward. I think that's what the community's asking for.
But you can have a lawyer present and not be in a mixed session as well.
Absolutely. Do you think it's going to benefit?
So, I mean, I guess the question to the board is, you know, when, when this is electronic, because.
Right, how do we all want to have access to this and all that discussion about it?
Can I ask two more questions, since it was my core request, and I gave these questions to you guys last week? Who in the district has access to those records that have been core? So Suzie does, and Kat does, because Kat's the author. Is that it, or does everybody have access in sole group? Because I know that, that really it's the CFO and the attorney that are listed as the point people and the policy.
And so then Suzie delegates or says who needs to be involved in this team to figure out who needs to see this. So depending on circumstances, it can be different. In this case, Kat and Suzie, you don't have the electronic version.
No, I just have the copies in my office that haven't even been prepped.
Okay, so it's just you and Kat then?
Yeah, and then as we.
That doesn't mean that people haven't other had to review them, because.
Right, just go ahead, Suzie. Yeah, I was going to say, between Kat was the one that pulled them, gave them to us. And then just a couple of questions, because Elizabeth and I both met with John. So as we discussed that, we really actually didn't even go through them, but we had them in our presence then to have that conversation with John, but didn't even go through them, but I don't think anyone else in the district has had a part of this one. But it just varies based off of the core request, it always starts with me and then based on what the situation is, I go out and.
Matt Krupka, he has to help, this is on the technical side of this, but I, Kat, he doesn't have the files. But he has to problem solve the technology side of this. Like, is there an easier way than Kat to have to go through every single email? And we have, he has a workaround that can export files much faster than ours for this particular one. But it's just like anything, until you go through it one time, you don't know what the best way to do it, and have a good way to do that.
Sure, 1,800 pages of documentation, there's a lot of pages of documentation for the district, which is already burdened from a time standpoint, to get through. Then we've reached the three hour threshold on getting stuff done, because that's mentioned.
For the original core request?
For the initial core request. Okay, so we followed our policy on that also, okay?
Yeah.
I have a question, just because I'm seeing a lot of things going on, and as I say, with the board that I'm not really happy about. But maybe we should be looking at how we set this up, it's same as city council, where we do have the attorney present to keep us in line when something's going off track and maybe going down the road the wrong way, or we're requesting something to be done that maybe, you know, maybe this is a time where, I hate to spend extra money, but maybe it's time that we, you know, at our regular sessions, we do not ask to have an attorney present.
For the purpose of, can you give a more explicit, like staying within?
Stay within the guidelines, if there's questions that we need to ask and say, you need to research this, that they can go out and research it. Instead of putting everything on these two over here to do, then we have somebody sitting here that says timeout. And, you know, as Natalie can say, that's what happens with, you know, city council, we have, there's an attorney present.
To say when you're getting too far in the weeds, right, as you say? Or in policy, out of policy?
And I think maybe it's time we need to do that, because I, we're going down that road, and I think we're going to get into a place to where I don't want to get into a place where we get sued, I get sued, the district gets sued because of something that was said or something that was, you know.
Yeah, I'd rather stay in best practice, wait before getting sued, so. Natalie, I see you nodding your head, what are your thoughts?
I mean, I guess I kind of, you know, I feel similarly, similarly to Gary in the sense that, you know, regardless of the results of this core request, it clearly demonstrates a lack of dignity on the board, and it's obviously a trust. And so I'd really like to work to correct some of that. So I do feel like it is an indicator of something not working, regardless of how the request. So I do feel like some of these things, like, build that together.
I mean, I'm all about, you know, staying within parameters, so I would have no problem with that other than the cost. And so if we have an attorney present when they're not utilized, we're still paying for that attorney to be present.
Paying by hour or retainer?
Yeah, it's by hour, by quarter, by quarter.
You know, so that would be my concern. So the things I would ask for us to discuss are, on this note, can we monitor ourselves to a point where if we do feel something's going offline, that that is tabled for an appropriate time when an attorney for the present? So if we have enough of those items, we can kind of batch our tasks if you follow that. That would be my thought.
Being efficient with attorneys is a very good practice. This might actually roll in nicely, and I think it makes sense, this might roll in nicely, we talked about doing a review, kind of a year review from a legal standpoint, which would find me the attorney present, we discussed that, this might be, that might be a great opportunity to have that discussion as well, since our retreat's not that far away. I think the legal questions that have come forth in the last year, I think having, you know, kind of a briefing on that, which we really haven't done, would be helpful in this, my role in that discussion, I say, but I think having an attorney, yeah, available, maybe not present for a three hour meeting, because that's a lot of teacher money that could be going to the other heats. So I wouldn't be necessarily in favor of that the whole time, but trying to be prudent with it. Since again, this is, this core request is a brave new world, this is the first one in four years that we've had, is that right?
For the board, for the school board.
But that's right, you, you have other core request, definitely. Core requests are not unusual or rare. In fact, they're probably picking up steam if there's a trend line.
Yes, and I've just, most likely when there's something like this, often times the media picks up, and they will also request a core request. So I assume that, because it is okay to have an attorney present so that you make sure that you don't make mistakes along the way. So I think that we, we have to balance that, this is.
Well, I mean, we may not want one for importunity, but we might want one maybe at our next meeting as just to kind of be a process observer in some ways, and be like, well, that's a little bit out of process, or that's not in policy, or that's for a policy governance board, that's overreach.
There's so much changing with core right now, that I, there's no way I would answer some of the questions on behalf of the district, it is changing.
So much is changing because it's being so highly used and courts are ruling on it?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, as a former social studies teacher, a judicial review is one of the ways that we have quite a bit of legislation.
And my other, my other thing is too, because I'm really pro, and I feel that we need to do this at this point, whether, some of my colleagues don't. But this will also give us a point of saying, okay, we're going to be efficient with our meetings, and maybe they last two hours, and we're looking at two hours of an attorney, or maximum maybe 12 meetings a year, you know? Is that really, you know, because right now, I think we need, we need it to get us back on track, so.
I think we need to put that on action items to go on and make it very specific. It's going to be for a certain number of meetings, if it's going to be, and the stupidness that it's going to look like, whoever makes that motion. Other questions regarding core?
And then the question would be, make sure the right attorney, is it somebody from the employees' council? But I think we have a contract with them to cover some of this, no we don't. I thought they were on our insurance plan.
No, we have, SISIP is our insurance school, and they, if there was, if there were a lawsuit of some sort, they would assign an attorney to our claim. But in this case, no, employers' council is a third party outside of, or it's legal council.
But we're a member, but we're a member.
We are a member.
Right, so we pay kind of a fee to have them have our access, and then there are certain things they do with them, that's fee. And then anything above and beyond that fee, that is what we pay for.
That's right.
Okay.
And, uh, school, school districts, they do work with school districts, but that, not like, it's not their specialty, but.
They're more employment law specifically, not as just law specifically. Where are we at, friends?
Well, when do we discuss, I guess, access for everyone? And then also, because this is my first rodeo as well, then what's typically done, what do we discuss? You know, so without a direction and without context, I'm not sure.
I think we all need to read it, so let's talk about that process first, and then. And then after we agree on a timeline for how we can all read it, access it, have some questions about that, then we can discuss it. It's hard to discuss it if we haven't gone through the, how many pages. All right.
I mean, I'll probably, I just gotta put it, thank you for giving us some time, I appreciate that. I got a few questions.
Suzie, do you have a recommendation on how that process?
I think, I don't know anything, I mean, I, I would prefer to just keep it on if we're going to do electronic right now flash drives, because that's what we've got. That would take the least amount of learning or getting a new system of some sort that keeps it encrypted. I don't know that.
It has to be done here. I think my recommendation should be done here. Unless some of the things that we are learning about, and I'll just keep that vague, unless you put, uh, persons on a, put their own core.
So we would bring in a personal device and have it downloaded onto that personal device. I'm just trying to think of all the steps.
I think if, if you're going to, if you want it to be on your device or for you to have access to it outside of here, then you would need to submit a core request. You could get your own flash drive. If you want to come and review them, then we could have a flash drive that you could, or I'm sure Kat has a computer that you could sit at and look at it here, or I have the printed copies currently.
Electronics nice because you can search things much more easily.
Yes.
And I mean, the one thing, there is a lot of pages, but it's because I think there's a lot of, you know, you have a lot of responses to it. So it generates more emails in that way.
If I was you, I would recommend coughing up the five bucks for a flash drive and being able to watch it. But it's up to you guys.
I don't have a flash drive.
Because then a doctor, you can get. But we have.
Now I'm in for an adapter and a five bucks for a flash drive?
That's, see, and there's that legal question that I've been.
About what? About who has access?
Yeah, if we form a request, when you court, does everybody here that wants to say?
I filled out a core, yeah. So everybody would have to fill out their own.
That's, I think, you know.
Right, is that correct? I mean, that's a correct process. We all have to fill out our own same information. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, that's the way I feel.
That's why the cleanest way to do it. And it's not a ton of work for you guys, and you've already got the pages from the original.
Yeah, I mean, once I got the flash drives today, Kat did it in two minutes.
So you're saying you have flash drives ready to go?
Blank flash drives that we could.
Okay, come on. So is everybody, I mean, that sounds the way to go.
Yeah, I submitted one for mine, so I think I'll have to submit another one for Jackson, and is it anyone else? Because I don't know. So if there's anyone else, I'll need to know that so I can submit a corporate, a core request.
Not at this time.
For all of us.
You got a core request also for you?
Yeah.
Okay.
So this is just Jack and I.
At this time, I mean, I'm aware of, so yes, I mean, that doesn't mean that there won't be more.
Okay, so I'm going to submit another one.
So just to confirm, we, we can ask.
Yes.
What do you say about five, if you want?
You could, you could do one core request and just put what you want, both of those things on there.
Can you put both on one flash drive and say?
Absolutely, yeah. So if you.
I can reset my flash drive.
Yeah, definitely.
But you'll need another one for me because I already submitted, right?
Yes. Yeah, there's, both of you will just have to submit a new core with the opposite.
Let me ask this question. So the whole thing is eighteen hundred pages? I mean, for every one of us?
No, just, just the two core requests, and it's not all emails. It was just based off of certain searches that were requested.
Yeah, brave new world.
Yes.
Could be Pandora's box.
Okay, board development. You've had quite a bit of public comment more in the last, the last meeting than we have at, in recent meetings. So with that uptick, as well as emails recently, kind of how do we want to divide that up between administrative tasks, right? That Elizabeth and her team will address and that will address. I mean, we could go person by person from the last meeting, but I was kind of thinking topic by topic. A more broad, it's not about the person, it's about the topic. You go Suzie, I'm sure you have been working all day and enjoy the conversation. I think one of the initial concerns was, was that the folks speaking in the public comment couldn't hear each other in the hallway. So it's like, how do we support that process so that everyone's aware of what we've said? That was a, you know, a big learning, so the venue or monitors, right, something like that.
What about, I attended a for district concert recently. Lovely. Facility at the elementary, which could house anyone that wanted to attend. That could be a potential option as a venue. That might help to promote.
Side feeling, I mean, it's a great venue. I, I love that venue. What's the IP capability of that, Kat? Would that be some for some, sorry? Oh, forget that right, sorry. Apologize, I saw the bike going, I asked it. What, what's the IP capability of the elementary school editorial? Do they have any IT stuff there, cameras and stuff like that? So I mean, we might be at the media center just because there is that, they might not have a camera that signs on the stage of the, I apologize. Just, just want to move into maybe the meeting, the next meeting, the next one, if we have people that want to give public comments, so they have room and they can be included. Right, my question was.
It would be very complicated in a, in a, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that would, I wouldn't have the equipment. I mean, it's really big, it's really hard to get the sound.
So the media center would probably be a better venue if we had more people.
But yeah, the only problem is that media center will not be available for the next few months.
Yeah, it's, because it's more important. But, no, we can, to me, the better, more comfortable, like, ways to engage are either the high school media center or the middle school. I'm parking at Manitola Middle School.
Was interesting today, is that, wow. Is it, I mean, we were in the media center during COVID. Is there anything to do about there?
It's, the one thing is that when students dismiss for the day, Kat just has a quicker turnaround, but I think we've got, we've gotten it down.
Getting good at it.
Our, our best hope, to be honest with you, would be if we could install this system wherever it's going to be permanent. And because Kat spends thirty, forty-five minutes each time setting it up, taking it down, no matter even if it's a five minute work session or whatever the case might be. If we could set up the high school media center for these microphones to be installed there. And we're at Manitola Middle School, so wherever this, wherever you want, wherever the board cuts it, let's just fully connect to that space. And I, as long as the calendar's set up in advance. Do you have a preference, Kat, for the middle school or the high school?
No, high school is probably more spaced because of that.
And, but short notice meetings, if there's something already there, we have to recognize that if they have an event, a banquet or something, we're not going to meet there with that system.
So it'd be easier just put a monitor.
Yeah, we could do that. We could just have a TV and monitor it right outside of your, that's what a lot of school districts do.
Yeah, it feels a little cold.
I, I, I think it doesn't, I mean, I think the media center in the high school worked, worked really well. Even when we had some big events, when there were student performances and those things.
Yeah, I mean, if that's not a hardship, then we don't have to buy a lot of new technology or. It's not really hard to buy at four o'clock because there's class at thirty, two thirty, and then. But we moved, but we moved everything back to not start until four thirty. Is that, is that sufficient for you? Does that work? Okay. But I think we should be good to go then at the media center with it, with notice.
But you know, I understand you don't do, we'll do it for the next three months, right?
That's right.
So.
Yeah, we can do it down at the Manitula Middle School through the summer. And then once that, the high school regulation happens, then we've got to, is that something?
This is nice to have been in one room possible, we're trying to promote community engagement. So I mean, having people in the hallway was, could have been planned better on our, so the board should know it matters. Unless we had everybody that did public comment, no give, and no five minutes notice, in which case, we'd like.
So looking at then how we're going to respond to public comment, which items are strictly administrative? Or which ones we're going to discuss? As I said, I was thinking with those topics by topic, or if anybody has other ideas, welcome to hear them.
We have a bunch of the notes from the last meeting. Since I think we had a couple of themes.
Or, um, in public comment from April eighteenth. And all, I didn't have to load them all. So any that was each other sent to her via email and or handed to you at that meeting, right?
Yeah, and I uploaded more today that were emailed, so they're in the April eighteenth meeting. Well, I had three that I had written down, and one was working with an outside organization to conduct our surveys. Continuing to work on that part-time HR person, which is a little outside of our, and then having a third party either conduct or be present. Those are sort of the three, my three takeaways.
Also have potential conference of interest. So, can I, you want me to address some of those now, or do you want to wait and see?
I want to see how everybody flexed it out, because I think from just even hearing from some people, everybody, it's something, well, maybe different stands out perspective wise. I heard thanks and gratitude from the robotics team. I heard Mr. Dudley was concerned about Boy Scouts and having meeting space. And those things are all things that are administrative and will lead to the district to take care of. The good things going on.
Feature turnover, excellent reviews, morale, but I'll kind of goes in one bucket that we'll probably be discussing tonight again. So that's going to need more thoughtful response. Probably we'll go out and do surveys, something talking about that, some of the details on that. Following up on last month's meeting where we talked about engaging, possibly engaging an outside, third party, give it twelve, or call their name, try to have another chance to do any research on that. But while looking at that, so I think that may give us some response on action the board is taking on the concern to those members, which I think lots of people share.
I've heard a couple of people speak about overreach for the front of the board in terms of getting into administrative detail. I've heard some positive supports for the district and the district leadership from various staff members and partnerships. I've heard concerns about the grievance policies, which we're going to address in our, not, excuse me, our regular meeting. Because policy or policy gets us into situations we don't want to be in. And it creates confusion as far as what is the difference between policy and what is not policy and violations thereof. Like, that's sometimes really hard. We miss our mark of having people understand what is our role and how much we should be doing and how much we should not be doing. What I've been hearing lately is a lot of people of us wanting us to do more and other people saying, no, that's actually not our job. So I think that goes into us having more discussion publicly about that perhaps. And then also just helping people understand what is policy governance for.
True, and and I'd direct people that are interested and that love policy to go to BVA.
Did you say that love policy?
Love policy. Uh, BVA, which is on Board Docs, which is a fantastic format that Elizabeth introduced in the district. So BVA is the School Board Powers and Responsibilities. So perusing that will give everybody an idea of what the policy roles are of the board. And I don't read it because I'm not a very good reader, but that's pretty straightforward. And then the other part of the policy issue, not just having good policy, but, but a couple of the people that presented it during public comment had concerns about the board following its policy. So that's not necessarily us having bad policy, that's following the policy that we currently have in place. And a very smart surgeon once told me, as I was taking over credentials, if you have a policy, you have to follow it. And if it's bad policy, you have to correct it. So if we have a policy in place, we have to follow the policy in place until we correct it. So that, that's what I heard, at least from a couple of speakers, well, free actually, that the board's not following its policy. And that's something that we probably need to think about carefully. And, and that's certainly a board response, not an administrative response, in my opinion.
Because, right, in that time you can't respond, but you know, you, the steps that you've been taking as board to address these things. So, right, that is exactly the awareness of, the goal of this dialogue is around, around that there are some things, just like in all HR matters. Can't screw up. And so that may be the case to the board, has to go back to what was, what was stated and what's the policy.
And I think.
No, I was gonna say, I think that's a real issue here, and in my neighborhood, I, you know, being out there, you know, being up and doing things that, uh, I've been doing it first from quite a few people, that says that they feel that we're totally getting out of our realm of being a board. And why are we doing this? You know, hearing the questions of why are people, you know, leaving or why did, you know, certain people leave or whatever? And, you know, if they knew, and as I told them, there's things that I cannot talk about, and there's things that cannot be talked about. Because, you know, as far as anybody's personnel thing, if they choose to talk about it themselves, that's up to them totally. But it's not our job. And what I've heard big time is those are the people that aren't going to come down here and they're not going to spend the time to come in here and say because they just want us to do our job, get back into where we should be. That's why I said that I really think it's a big thing that we do have an attorney present to get us back into where we should be. We've got way out of line. I may read the policy different than Jackson read the policy. And, you know, everybody's going to read it, interpret it differently. But I think there's a point in time where we have to stop and say, can we discuss this? I'm sorry. You don't, you can't know and you don't need to know. That's just the way it is. And that's what I've heard. And I've heard from quite a few people or that's the group that's been coming in here.
So just to follow up on the whole executive session and staff discussions and open for our current and even the potential revised GP AR. On the whole, the executive session path, the board's review of the grievance may be held in executive session of the rest of the employee. That's obvious, the superintendent for the board. So it's already up to those three groups to decide whether that stuff is executive session or not. Now, anybody can say we want an executive session, then that will happen. But just because it's an HR issue or a grievance follow-up, again, even in our new proposed policy that I got a chance to brief today, it doesn't mandate executive session unless one of those three say this has to be rejected, or I want it to be an executive session.
It's, it's only like six conditions under the state statute. If the personnel matter is, let's say the board decides, board superintendent decides it to be an executive session. That employee can say, I did not want it to be an executive session. They can pull it out of the executive session, they've got a public table, so that's.
I didn't know that, that's great.
Yeah, yeah, that becomes the individual.
It's not, yes, correct, exactly correct.
And then also, once discussed an executive session, we won't be talking about it outside of the executive session.
Right, that's where emails around employment matters are very important.
So I have to be cautious if you're alluding to it.
Yes. So I can give some, some information that Suzie, tonight, as we talk about the proposed budget. K-12 Insights is the third party that we talked about that could run our, our, in, our spring. K-12 Insights is the third party that we talked about that could run our, our, in our spring semester climate surveys, which are very important to us. And that will be brought into the district's action plan, brought into the school and the department's action plans. We take the student staff with defects very, very seriously. Each comment is reviewed and read, and that also can be part of the district accountability committee as well. So this is some important information that we take very seriously. It's guided a lot of the work that we've done. So that will be budgeted. Suzie has budgeted to include K-12 Insights for next school year, and looking forward to that, because we have hired, had to hire someone else to do some of that. This aggregation of that data, just because, as I said, it was from originally in Google, now it's in Survey Monkey, and so now there'll be a potential third iteration. So I also want to add, just for my, our climate surveys, and the last, checked with Marcia earlier today. She's seen an increase in the number of folks who are completing their exit interviews. There is no identifiable information that's collected, so you don't collect a team member or email address. It's really, I think the questions are something like, what do you keep doing, start doing, stop doing? And so there's some good feedback, there's some themes that we can then also bring into the district action plan. And I still recommend that is an administrative aspect of the work, and that I trust Marcia's ability to collect that data in a very secure way, bring it forward. The names are not assigned to it, and I feel very confident in that ability to have that information. It would. It's something that we can explore with K-12 as we develop a contract with them next year, but right now, we don't have that budgeted for this particular two years. So Suzie and I can kind of update you all as we go, but the feedback has been good. For example, one person said, just would like to make sure there's some robust professional development opportunities. There was some, maybe some inconsistency in student discipline that has contributed to some frustrations. A real honest feedback when we talked about it today was sub-coverage for a teacher. So when a teacher covers another teacher, they they receive fourteen dollars, so they're selling, but they're giving up their their planning period. So then anything that they would be doing during that planning period is now moved to outside of the school day. And so we're saying, well, that's the sub-rate, but that's something that we would like to bring to the district accountability committee next year, or even sooner to say, is that appropriate? That they're getting to fourteen dollars sub-rate versus now they're going to have to grade papers outside of the school day, which you can imagine would contribute to staff. So this is, this is good information that folks, one person said they'd like to have more meetings up at youth castle elementary school, that makes sense. And I know Jackie Powell and Chris, we're we're interested in doing this thing, so some feedback around just needing to leave because of childcare. But the salary cannot afford to have their children in daycare while they are paraprofessionals or teachers. So the salary came up, and we could not look in at Maya, because we know this is real. So we're getting good feedback that can be used in actionable ways, and I think that. I'm thankful that folks are calling us out. Two years ago, we didn't have exit surveys at all. So this is all an evolution of getting good feedback from our staff. And we're also doing our business sessions now, which are super helpful for us, and already making actual changes there, so I'm sure that with that exit survey.
Do you know the rate on the exit interviews for K-12 Insights to do them? Because it seems like we're already contracting them. I mean, it'd be a pretty simple ad, but I don't know what they.
I don't know, we can, we can kind of price it out. When I just did this, when we just did the surveys, arrangements between five to seven thousand dollars, I can't imagine it being, you know, that big. There's even less data that would be sort of created there, so yeah, we can work into that.
Well, I just think it would be worth it, kind of take it up everyone's plate locally. He's a, he's a distribution. Amongst other things, so I'd be interested to see what it would be, if we're already contracted, then I would think it wouldn't be that much, but.
He's the same vendor.
Yeah, because I mean, then we talked about that last time, that they actually provide that service.
I think, I mean, I'm, I'm hopeful that they can do something like that, and they definitely do service. I guess to me, too, I would hope that. It seems like sometimes the. Movement to doing everything outside of the HR department is also concerning, like what, where is the breakdown in trust? Because there's not a single person that I wouldn't trust with every single aspect of my confidential information that I get to work with every day. But there's some work we need to do with our, within our community around ensuring that we have really highly competent people. That's where, I don't think that's necessarily what anyone's saying, but I want to make sure that that's not a narrative, because they are, they are so fully committed to meeting confidentiality. But it also, I think I hear you saying too, just for the sake, just it's a little bit easier, so. If it's twofold, the ease of the district, but also some question, I want to make sure that we're addressing here. Only and honestly.
Now, I've never worried about confidentiality, I've concerned about just capacity, meaning the staffing level that we need more.
I sense, I have heard a couple of questions there around, around this topic, so I want to make sure that that's not, that's not why we're doing. And if it is, I mean, that. But if that's the why, that's great.
Well, admission that's the staff that they weren't, and they're the ones we're trying to get information from. But if there's a way to.
We have folks who are completing it, so I think that's a plus that. And I think taking the, at one point, it was, the email name was maybe it's sent to him or that Suzie, and then that has been taken off. But that was mostly just the folks that completed it, not to assign that, but I could see how someone's saying, I don't want to leave that, my email address is on there, so that's been addressed.
Yeah, I mean, and honestly, on the, on the topic of trust and such to survey, you know, we kind of discussed having K-12 Insights do that. Part of the reason was that, was people's ability to have anonymity as an option.
They do have anonymity through Survey Monkey, that is completely confidential. There is no, so that, that narrative is out there that it's not confidential, it is. There's a unique email that's sent to every single person, either staff, a student, or parents. That email can only be used one time, it's based on, Kat's not here right now, that can't be used. Kat, could you talk about how that email from Survey Monkey can only be used?
Yes.
Fill it in.
You know what? Yeah, some of the reason why we track them by email, because we need to be able to see that, that's where they sent it from, it's only been used one time. That the loading through email, and the moment to submit that, they're not able to use that survey again. There's some people before this, we don't need IP address, because then people could go to multiple different computers, iPads, and it just sort of go over the facts.
So Survey Monkey resends out when somebody has not completed the survey, so to note that.
But I can't see with it.
No.
So what I'm hearing perhaps is that it is anonymous, but there may be a perception that it is not. Is that, is that more what you're saying? It's not fully coming in, correct?
No, that sounds accurate.
I guess the question is, how do you clarify? I mean, that to me is the work of the board, our, our groups, folks who attend. And this is to say, this is how, this is that we. We have news districts all over the country, it is anonymous, and that's one of the reasons we're doing it, right? Google this year to make sure that folks saw it as a separate, like a separate piece.
Yeah, I think you said, I couldn't find it, the, the school-based number of survey respondents last year versus this year.
Yeah, it's in that PowerPoint, let's go through it.
Excellent, thanks, that's got the actual number now.
Um, it has the percent.
I thought you sent me the number, but for some reason, I saw it. I was trying to see kind of where that was going, and again, it was kind of a, a surrogate, we don't know if act or not, for, for teachers, as, as their group of staff versus the other staff.
So I, I know your question was, what is the denominator of teachers for the twenty twenty-one versus twenty-two?
Okay, fair enough.
And you can't break that down, because it's by teachers, we include what, we include all staff, so it's, it's. Question. You have licensed staff, and then you have classified staff, so teachers doesn't capture all of the licensed staff.
So we talked about staff and staff turnover, the denominator, so the numerator is, you know, the number of teachers staying or leaving this month, or whatever that number is, four or five, I can't follow those, I've got it here. The denominator, we don't know what the denominator of teachers is in the district, you know, what percent of our teachers are.
Yeah, are you talking about the survey, or are you talking about?
Well, I'm talking about, I guess I'm kind of muddling them both together, sounds that we can't get the survey number, okay.
Only because we're bleeding into survey, which is our next topic away from board development. So, and so I can see the confusion there. So we move back to board development, which is, we have some concerns, some are administrative and already being worked on, some are possibly own. So what are the ones that we own, that we need to discuss and talk about, or is it? Right?
We're following its policy, that's one.
What, what commonality? And so in not following policy, I have that down, too, I have not following policy, but I have too much or too little. I would say that we have people that, again, think that we are too aggressive in our actions and overstep and outside of policy. And others that would say that we're not following the policy enough, and thus not following our policy. So that is, is that more time in policy, is that more time with our council so that we better understand our policy? Is that meetings where we have a deeper discussion about the interpretation of it? I'm not arguing what was said, I'm, I'm discussing what are our potential next steps, and how do we want to rectify that?
Well, some of it's black and white, like on the page where it's stated that the board's review of the grievance. That's pretty straightforward, the steps shot like one, two, three, and four, there's really little difference between GPK or previous and GPK are proposed. So some of that's pretty straightforward in GPLs, it's also quite straightforward, if something gets referred to the board, and it's gone through the other things, based on the board's discussion, understanding, based on the board's discussion. And understanding of what's happening, plus minus the attorney's involvement, then we have to follow that policy. So that's, that's a board.
Well, I would say that's based on the advisement of the local council that's been supporting through that process.
To the board.
To the board.
Advisement to the board, correct, I agree.
And again, that's where I think it's critical that we have, because we're getting into these issues here where we're all trying to be an attorney, we're trying to, you know, you decipher differently than I do. And I think that is a critical key if we want to start moving forward with. Too much strong on, too lack on, or whatever, that we do have representation here, because right now, they could say, no, that's, we shouldn't be going there. Or yes, this is, and it's already passed through all these steps, and this is where we need to be at our level at this point. Because I think there's a lot of time for bringing too much stuff in too early, and getting way too involved. And I'll say it again, I'll say it on my little soapbox over here. I'm not here to be like, I'm here to do the right thing for this school that's.
That continues to be a discussion item on the table that we can do an action item.
You know, I appreciate when the, when emails come through, I respond to every email, and always happy to with any person, talk to them. Multiple people at a time, it does not matter to me, like every single person's perspective matters. I know that any principal, I've met with parents and principals before, and for that school matters, happy to do that, any of our students. So appreciate you just responding to that, we're happy to meet, we always are. It's actually, to me, the most important work is, is hearing from all of our stakeholders. And just because something might not change, it doesn't mean it doesn't contribute to what happens next. I think about, Gus and I are on a superintendent student advisory group, they have some really good ideas. And one of the students just literally said, well, just because we don't necessarily get what we're asking for, and we need this information, it doesn't mean that it wasn't listened to, and that we can't do something with it. There are ways that we can do, take that information and inform next decisions, so thank you for that.
And that's very important, actually, allowing, and to, to start out what Elizabeth was referring to, the student was asking for a pathway to bring forth. Concerns, questions, ideas to be implemented, and so to have that platform, not only for students, for staff, and for community, which we've all talked about for quite some time. And so to get those, I think, those processes in place, those pathways in place, so that the students have this opportunity. And what did come from that conversation, as Elizabeth alluded to, was that ability to be heard, that ability to have my voice listened to, acknowledge the things I'm going through. So whether it's a feeling of, you know, a struggle, or simply some good ideas that we want to bring forth, there's a pathway to do so. And so I, I still, I think that this is a wonderful opportunity for all of us to create at least those three pathways. And, and develop them so that they continue long past our gray, my gray, or most of you other than Natalie. Be in that club, but so those kind, and I think that would be something we could leave behind, is that, that pathway for voice to be heard. And so we can have that regular engagement and have discourse, that's what I think so many people are looking for, is, is simply to be heard and to understand. And when people don't understand, that's when, you know, imaginations start to be creative, and they go, fill in the blanks. So I think that supports our transparency initiative, really engaging with, with all the.
To that point, I try to continue to reiterate the importance of the district accountability committee and those charge questions. So I really hope that the school board will come up with some important charge questions for the DAC. We do have some open spots there, so that I could ask that question, how do people join the DAC? Well, when we have an opening, for example, at the high school, we have a teacher who's been on for three years, we have a parent who is cycling off after this three-year commitment. If anyone's interested, they just reach out to me, and, and I do, I share, share with some parents as well, if you're interested, let me know. And as we kind of fill these spots, it's a, it's an invaluable community. That is the liaison between the school district and the board, is the DAC. The reasons the state of Colorado has a district accountability committee is for that reason. This is where it's designed, there's intentional purposes for having parents, students, staff on this group. It's the same reason that schools have a school accountability committee. This is where information shared also goes in, and sometimes school districts have a DAC or superintendent system related to people. Ours is a working, a working community that presents to you in December, that presents to you all in April, or whatever the case might be. Real change has happened from the DAC, and I sure hope that this group and everyone here can continue to say, no, actually, we can post, we post, we share our meetings notes with the, with the schools. Looking at by, she's been on there three years, some really critical work has happened there, and it is about accountability. So when you talk about the structure and role of policy governance, the state realized years ago that there needs to be a term of accountability, that that is structured. So I hope the board will come up with some really strong questions there, because we didn't have charge questions this year, as you know, we had our action plan developed, so. For anyone who's interested, we have spots available with that.
From Turquith, and for those of you who came in, just again, if you're not familiar with board processes, it's one of the things we've been talking about, is we're not doing enough communicating about what boards do, or what your board does. This is a work session still, we're going a little bit over time, because we have a lot of things, and it is discussion only, we do not take actions in work session. It is discussion, and then you'll see those action items that we choose to take as a board on work session agendas, work session regular, sorry.
Would you explain on the opportunity for Tuesday night, because there are some questions that I've received.
Okay, yeah, so maybe a little bit soon, because I don't want people going, but you said. So prior to COVID, and I know we always keep using COVID as an excuse, but it's quite true. I was thinking we needed some kind of community leadership academy, and that is both two, two, two tracks. One is information about really state law around school districts and school board and school financing, as well as what does it look like at the local level, right? Yeah, don't know it, no, don't make that face, it's not boring, it's going to be exciting. Okay, it's going to be super exciting, if someone is a career educator, super exciting. But what happens a lot is we use jargons, right? But what happens a lot is we use jargons, right? We get elected to boards, and maybe these guys know more than me when they got on. But even as an educator, it's very foreign being on a public board. It takes a while to get going. Look at any school board currently, that is what they struggle with. And so in the last two elections, Natalie and I just walked on, these three walked on. When they, they, during their election, we didn't have very many candidates, right? They were uncontested. Doesn't mean that we're not, we're not trying our best and that we work with candidates. Just meaning that really, our democratic process really should be more robust. Also, the DAC should be more robust. And some of you are like, Tina, I don't have time to be on a board, I don't have time to be on a DAC. That's okay, because you're a member of our community. Doesn't mean you still shouldn't be part of a leadership academy, getting the knowledge and the leadership and service skills that we would like to bring to you. So you can just be a voice out in the community. Not a constrained voice, not a limited voice, it's your voice, but that you have some real content and resources to draw upon when you're using that voice. And so the curriculum that I had prior, and I've reached out to people at UCCS, UCCS, is that right? Yes, I'm saying that five times. Citizens Project, as well as the Center for Creative Leadership, so we might partner this for that leadership and skills piece. And then talking to different people that we can bring in for all those other chunks of information. Because there's so much to public education. It was not, it's not the little schoolhouse that my mom grew up in, back in Nebraska. It's not the, what we talked about colonial times, where just the meeting house of all the people got together and all the kids just kind of gathered, right? With their sleep. That's not what it is. It is big business in some ways, when you look at the states, the, the testing organizations like Pearson. When you look at the curriculum, the vendors, right, when you look at grants from this, it's huge. And so to ask parents to work full-time, raise their kids, and then come on in and, you know, try and get engaged. So I wanted to do something positive for the community, when, wish we could have done that before COVID, because we are seeing this disenfranchisement, we are feeling that. And I watched this really cool movie recently, and it was like, if you, we don't give somebody, people something to look forward to and some hope, and something to fight for, we're just gonna fight against. So that's what I'm doing tomorrow night, is I'm meeting with some people that I just mentioned. From, that are also from some nonprofit organizations tomorrow night. Dr. Lain will be with us as well. And we're just brainstorming, like, what can we do? And then the next step is I will bring it to my fellow board members to say, what do you think? Can we roll this out? Is this something we can bring to our community?
At six o'clock here in this room.
Yeah, and you said there's gonna be snacks.
Yeah, we'll have snacks.
So that's something that we're really excited about. There'll be an application process, there'll be a commitment, because it's gonna be multiple sessions. And we're looking for one of these leadership organizations, whether it's the Center for Creative Leadership, UCCS, Citizens Projects, to have a certificate at the end, because they will be sponsoring us. If it doesn't happen this very first cohort, we'll look for it the second year, right? It is a little bit late for me to start saying, and some of these projects do take money. And so then I would have to be looking at grants and outside funding agencies like Almar and Danil's fund. That's the vision.
Thanks. I have one more thing, I know we're on time, but Tina, I mean, Natalie brought up around the HR position. In talking with Suzie and Eric, and I know that that, that position is something that we've talked about. Really have set on structuring, and it's not completely articulated, but I just wanted to make sure I can address this, because we have everyone here. That with our, with our proposed budget, that there's not a new position, but a restructuring internally of how HR matters will be handled either on the licensed side or the certified side. So we have some internal ways that we can restructure, and actually it makes a lot of sense. So we did not budget for ECU in this fiscal cycle, based on, we want to make sure that we keep salary increases as high as they can right now. So that's what our bid was.
I bet. It is competitive out there for teachers and other staff.
So we have, once I have that.
Like you didn't know, but it is.
We have that organizational structure, I'll bring it, so they know.
Yeah, you just, sure. More about how we want to take care of public comment or public communication?
It seemed like at least three or four people talked about the teacher issue, how do we handle that? Because that mostly administrative, but obviously the board, based on that policy I did do earlier, that's staffing and that thing, appraisal, the board's responsible for employing staff next year, instructional program. So that is under the board's powers and responsibilities. So how do we, how do we tag that? For me, it'd be helpful to have some data to start with, and we had this graph that Elizabeth did last year for us, this kind of bar graph that showed what our percent turnover is. It'd be helpful to have that updated. I don't know if this was done in May, I just can't remember well, I apologize.
We usually do it after, as we start the new school year, so that we know going into.
So you know if you're fully staffed and you're something like that.
Yeah, and I, I have to tell you, I appreciate it when folks right now let us know they're not coming back. Some are, are leaving the state, or they don't have jobs, and they're leaving for whatever reason. It helps us to make sure that we can fill positions, and it's not in the summer. So that is always much help, much more helpful, even folks are saying, I'm not gonna be here, I'm just gonna let you know this now. So, yeah, that's typically in August, once we know what has happened through the summer.
Because the turnover piece would just be people leaving, people leaving. So, yeah, I hope you know that sooner or later. The, the people coming on, that's great, hopefully fill all the positions. I had a question on how many open positions we have. I guess I could just look at that on the website, it's great.
Yeah, that's right.
But, but so knowing how many people are, are leaving is helpful, because part of our district action plan is to recruit and retain the best possible staff members that we can. So, so having that data clearly lines up with what our district action plan is that we decided on, I guess, a year and a half ago, maybe two years ago, coming up to now.
And I'm, I'm just very honestly, there's a person who replied for a position, and I told Tina earlier, where they want to be in Manatee. They want to leave their school districts here in El Paso County, and they want to work in our schools. And the salary is, is just not the same. And so they would take a pay cut to come to, to Manatee, and that's not the first time I've heard that. So we, I wrote very adamantly that if we did not address the school, Colorado school finance act, systematically, this will continue to happen in our state. So we are in a small community in a larger county, that are all the same staff, but we hold them different reasons. Do I recognize that folks might leave for different reasons than that? Yes, but, and their reasons matter just as much as well, but this is a real, so we're talking about retention recruitment. It is, it's just real, the changes there, so we have to go there. And I can also, I do want to say on the morale side too, I have received feedback that some of the focus on why people are leaving is affecting the people who are staying. It is affecting them in tremendous ways, and I'm looking at folks who are nodding their head. And so I would ask that we really come together and support the staff, both through whatever the reason they might be leaving. But folks are staying for a lot of great reasons, and a lot of great staff are also not able to continue working here for a lot of different reasons. So that, that, that is affecting the morale of people who are staying here, and I just want to share that with you all, because I think that narrative is very, very important right now. So I do think that is the work of the board in relationship with superintendent, is how do we make sure that the folks who are here, we're saying, we need, we want you to stay here. Every single position, every single role, and every person who might step out of their position, that they have a place when they want to come back, or they can come back.
I was just saying, as a matter of perspective, looking at why people are leaving does support staff that are staying. Because they're looking to determine if there's any reason that we can address, which we can work to, to help the situation, so that we can keep the staff we have happy and, and so on and so forth. And Tina, to your point, I guess, a question around the communication with the public comment. And Elizabeth, you mentioned the DAC, which is a great opportunity. But in addition, I'll go back to the three band branches or pathways for communication, because as someone who has delivered or seen public comment, I should say, in action, it's, you know, it's uncomfortable, I think we all know. Someone presents for, for three minutes, and then there's crickets by design. So it's not a pleasant experience, nor is it, they're an opportunity for discourse, I understand why it's there. So if we have regular opportunities, so if people would rather not just make statements, but have discourse. We could have these opportunities for community to do that, for staff to do that, for, for students to do that, so that those voices could be heard. And conversation can happen, rather than just a statement.
Do you think like listening sessions and that, or community forums, or?
Yeah, we talked, and I'm, I'm gonna forget again who was here online, who helped us from.
She'll be here tomorrow night, she's gonna be part of our leadership academy.
So she had some great ideas that they do, which we were looking to implement, I think. We had discussions of that, so really around these, these opportunities to have discussions and discourse versus the more sterile public comment.
Yes, I, I have it in District of Oregon general. So the action plan that we will, we're working through now at an administrative school level. In our July retreat, we will look at those, and there's this six leverage point is around community engagement. My thinking is that July is where the board could then plan out some of these community, board community linkages that Karen spoke about. So you can have maybe one a quarter or something like that, but we do, I have it as an action item in the district action plan, so it's, it's a period we're scheduled for.
Awesome. Especially at that time period, because when we talk tomorrow night, we're gonna be talking about people going to the Leadership Projects Academy. We'll have projects that they'll do, and they can partner either with board members or staff members to work on those projects. Other things on that, on, uh, feedback, board development. Are we moving on to culture survey? I think I'm looking at old notes.
So I just presented the culture survey unit, right? You'll see some very consistent results there. I don't have a presentation.
Okay, I, I, yeah, that everybody was able to access the charts.
One of the things that we will do as a leadership team, Jane and June will come back and come together and look at this. Make sure that our actions and our action plans align to the feedback and comments. As I said, each of the schools have them as well, and department leads will be as well. So those key indicators of success, they're increasing or decreasing, is aligned to this work, or what's working, not working. So I did ask consultant to pull out, based on the discussion last month, that last survey. That's last survey, where it takes the district department staff and the school-based staff. We'll see a decrease in the number of individuals who are part of that, but that, I don't think it's statistically right to pull anyone out of the survey and use it as, as, as data that's accessible, because we don't necessarily know how somebody was identifying in the work. So for example, technology department, they, they work with CAT, and they're particularly in a school. They may have selected department, or they may have selected school. There's no kind of way to prevent that from happening. So, but it is here, you can see that public data coming out. And just to the community here, these survey results are also available, so we could use all of this and make this public.
So will you be following it up, like you said, with your staff, and providing a narrative response for us as far as what you saw and what you'll be doing with the information?
Yeah, it'll be in the action plan, through our retreat. Nothing sort of stood out as decreasing or increasing, I think actually some indicators of question increase around does the district value transparency actually increase on the staff side, so. Yeah, we'll, we'll put that through the district action.
Any other questions about the survey or any discussion points from the rest of the board? Big time. Superintendent evaluation process?
Yeah, so just, this is the evolution of the, my evaluation, superintendent's evaluation. As we talked about in June, July will be the formative assessment. We took the work from Karen that she recommended that they used in another district, District 20. And so what you see here is just where these executive conversations and statements are monitored. So I filled that in on the months where they are. Really, it's just a form document that you always say, how, how, was it monitored, was it not? What are some evidence of performance here and or scenario? So. This will be the first summer that this document will be used, getting away from that rubric. So that's what that form is. I did go ahead and post the planning calendar, and if at all possible, if y'all are okay with this, this would be important for board action and board development process for the regular.
For the next regular meeting or this regular meeting?
Yeah, there were no changes from this full year. I think pushing the statements to September, October, November allowed the board to have a good understanding of where we are from the previous year as you approach the superintendent's evaluation that then starts in January. So you'll have the bulk of that data all, so that it can be a nice time for us. So unless you have any feedback for this.
So the document in there is really 22, 23?
Yes.
Because when you click on the link, it says 21, 22. And months maybe all be the same.
It should be 20, 22, 23. Yeah, I see it didn't change in the top. You see that? The, um, the document there. Also, also be reflected there.
So this month and next, we're a little off our meeting schedule. We have a regular meeting on the sixth. We don't see another meeting scheduled for June to work on this, so with the July retreat. So am I, am I, am I tracking that correctly?
That was right.
So the June 6th, that's our regular, it's a regular meeting at 4:30.
That was to approve the budget and for consent for employment. And or we could start the formative part in June.
Well, that's what I was gonna talk to the rest of the board about, if we have some more time at a work session, because we're gonna need to talk about this and get, start getting populated and discuss process, so that it can be tabulated, presented, the July retreat, the doctor.
Yeah, because also in that, I think, Karen, I got it right, didn't I? Karen, from the 20th, so we talked about, you know, the assessment and the thing that we borrowed, which really like. But also providing opportunity, much like the three branches of communication, but for evaluation, much like a principal evaluates a teacher in the classroom. We would be able to talk to, or they would be able to talk to us, so students, staff, and community with, about their engagement with the superintendent. We take that into consideration, along with the summative informative evaluations. But I don't think we spoke about how that would look or work.
Do you feel like that's something that you can bring some ideas into that June 6th meeting? My meeting's on Friday night at 6, and we'll see you. You can join us.
Aside from just the business thing, so if we don't approve the budget till June 6th, when do the teachers get their, when do the staff get their contracts, I'm sorry?
After tonight's meeting, we'll send out an email letting them know, based on our conversation tonight, that they should be ready this week. Friday's our hope that they'll be out completely by Friday.
Right, just a little, hey, too late.
Yeah, no, we want them out by Friday before they leave.
So is that regular meeting is at 4:30?
And we do the work session at 4:30, and then do a regular meeting after that? Okay, so then we do regular work session at 4:30, and start working on the superintendent's evaluation, and then the regular meeting at 4:30.
Yeah, that's fine. Actually, I have a board meeting scheduled for 9:00 PM on that day, so that's a tight one.
9:00 PM?
Yeah, that's all right.
It is not.
That'd be works fine.
You good with that? Okay.
So that's 4:30, we have the regular, you're saying, add the.
Move the regular meeting to 5:30 and have a work session at 4:30.
Yeah.
That work?
Yeah, I'll make it work.
Okay, thank you so much.
We're moving to 6, just so people that are getting public comment, we'll be waiting while we're finishing the work session.
We could have the work session afterwards. We just want to be able to move anything from the work session to a regular session for action.
A lot of people get public comment, like have day jobs, so they might not be able to make it for 6. I think, I think 4:30 and 6 is probably.
More doable.
Kind of like tonight, although.
That's fine. Okay, I mean, as long as my night is here, it's here.
Y'all are doing great, you got two minutes, that's awesome. I know, we just want to be able to send those invites to everyone.
Yes, sir.
4:30 and 6, staff structures to the bottom.
Thank you, we did.
Do we want to consider moving an action item to, or just today to add council?
I would like to see that.
So someone just needs to do that at the beginning of the next week?
I'll just move what, I'm just, I'm sorry.
Somebody would like to have an action item around having council to.
Okay.
We'll discuss the specifics, if it's moved, if it's seconded and becomes live discussion.
Can we have this one thing that kind of bothers you? Then we as a board, I know we agreed upon this a year ago, whatever, that we're not here. I know we asked a lot of questions, I don't really ask that many questions. Then ask my questions. Hopefully get that done. Can we as a group kind of look at, say, limited team, what we're tasking, are already overly busy staff with doing? Can you space it for questions? You know, I know we may have questions, but we should be able to have these questions, should be out in the board. That's why, instead of independently trying to task these people, because I know, I know they're busy. We need to, we need to stop that.
What's our commitment to that?
So I guess I'm a little confused. So I ask questions before the meeting so that we have answers at the meeting. Otherwise, you end up doing meetings before you get answers because somebody doesn't have the answer because they're not ready for the questions. So that actually is a way that has been used for a long time and a lot of successful organizations for having meetings be productive and effective. So I don't think that takes more time because otherwise it just means you're gonna get your answer a month later. So I guess I'm not sure, I mean, I've got a list of questions that I sent out last week to Tina Elizabeth, but I'm happy to give you, they're all questions that either have to do with the budget or a teacher retention and morale or policy. And then some of them are questions that have actually been asked by our community as well. So the community may be asking more questions, that's part of your discussion. You had about how are we gonna kind of give you of answering those questions? That's, that's gonna take time also. I think that's just part of being on a school board in this day and age, especially in the environment that we currently have, that we have to be prepared to ask questions and have answers because our community, at least from my perspective, which is clearly different than your perspective, our community is asking those questions.
Well, and I think that there's a lot of times where we may get an agenda item. We looked at agenda and it suddenly came up that we didn't really think that we got everything we need to know, then we postponed that agenda. And I mean, it's going to a different month, it goes to another month. I don't have a problem with that, but I just don't think, you know, we are, you know, to especially disagree. But I think that there's a lot of times that we, you know, we should be able to ask these questions right now and say, all these things are gonna be on next month's meeting and we've already asked the questions where we're gonna, we're gonna go to. Not, because a lot of times I, I just don't want to see to where, I've been on another board and it happened same way. We were over tasking all the questions. And once we got resolved where we felt that we can say, we need to postpone this item and we felt good about it, then we postponed it because then we got the right answers and the right questions were asked during that other time because we had a little bit more time to discuss that. So to me, I think if there's something on here that really concerns you and you say, I don't have enough question answers for that whole thing, I'm gonna request that we pull that from the agenda and postpone it till next week. And that's how I feel like it should happen. Cause right now, I think you may have a lot of questions and we all don't know what those are, Jack. I mean, that's.
I would agree with that, is that I didn't know you were emailing a lot of questions. But I think the other part is that whenever we're asking staff to do something, I think the board has to read all of that information. So, cause that's, you know, again, that's highly valuable. So I think that's, again, everyone has this for the board too, where is one person will say, we want parking information for the last five years and there's silence. And then someone has to say, does anyone else want parking information for the last five years? Do you have to agree as a board that we want staff to spend time getting us that information? So I think that's where that line could be drawn.
How do we do that with restrictions of, you know, board meeting? Does anyone have ideas?
What do you mean instructions? Yeah, I mean, it just has to all happen in meetings.
That's like the exit survey information, like I have not, there's no action. That's, that's really an administrative task and we want to, of course, we're open to, to making things better, but that really isn't administrative task. And so unless the board's a hundred, there was consensus here to say, no, this is what, what wants to happen. And that can happen as well, so, but it should happen here. What, what needs to be answered for the next meeting should happen.
That's, that's why we separated out the sessions, right? So work in the regular session, slow down things, make them more public. Discussion happens here, work session into the action. This was, you know, a move that we had to have these two stacked together tonight.
And like you say, I don't have a problem with, if I had a concern with an agenda item and I didn't have enough information, I'm gonna be the one to raise my hand and say, can we pull out an item and maybe postpone it till the next meeting? Cause I don't have enough information. Now, I may be the only one and you guys vote me and say, no, we've got enough, we can move forward, then we move forward. But I have that opportunity, so.
Something goes against your sense of urgency, but I'm willing to bow to the, well, the group that I consider at this point, because of the 1800 page court request, all my emails are public, so I'm happy to email all of you with questions that we.
Not all your emails, the emails that are sort of certain, or I letter.
So I'm, I'm more than happy to email questions and you can say, yeah or no, I guess. Or they'll just be out there and then we discuss that work session.
Technically, that becomes a P.
Only if you reply, I guess, is it a?
No, right, we talked about no daisy chaining, remember that phrase? And no mass emails that, because then these people do not see those emails and they don't know what is being put out there. It has to happen here.
So any note from Elizabeth with the notes on the meeting, that's a different thing though.
Yeah, so many information and it's, it's can be public.
And she is not a board member.
Right, she is not a board member. Okay, you'd be a month behind, that's fine.
I think it's better to be, I personally think it's better to be a month behind if the whole board doesn't have information they need and to do the right thing, because we're here to do the right thing for what it's district and that's my opinion. So if I have to wait 20 days or 15 days or whatever, I'm good with that.
And we shouldn't have to because now we move to the calendar where we are meeting every two weeks. Instead of one long meeting. Now we're having two long meetings.
I mean, that calendar stalled out July.
We said we would reassess it in July and see what we think about that process. My request, and you guys were kind enough to do that, to see if two meetings work better than one meeting. And we'll have that discussion at our retreat, unless Gus comes up with a better name for retreats. Says he doesn't feel like a retreats.
Vacation.
Vacation, I don't know if it feels like a vacation, nor do we want that listed on our board. So unless there's anything else, I am gonna adjourn for a five minute bio break and then we will return. Thank you for sticking with us, we need to members.